Good evening, welcome to Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, May 7th, 2013. My name is Sherri Clements and I'm the Chair. And if we could stand please and say the Pledge of Leeches.
Pledge of the Leeches is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Reading, could you do the roll call for us?
Commissioner Clements?
Here.
Commissioner Seibel?
Here.
Commissioner Furby?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Waterman?
Here.
Okay. So we have a quorum. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the revised agenda that was presented to us, which has a slight change in wording and its own change. Do I, I don't need to read that, do I, staff? Okay.
Okay, do we have a second? A second? Okay. All in favor of approving of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next let's take a look at the minutes from March 5th. We missed the April meeting, so we're looking at the March 5th minutes. Were there any comments, questions, edits necessary?
Move to approve the amendments present.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes from Tuesday, March 5th, 2013, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, and I see we do not have any old business this evening, and we do have one public hearing. We will be hearing ZC-13-02, Request for a MAP Amendment Zone Change from Residential A to Residential C Zone for Tractor Land, which is currently known as Shady Grove's Mobile Home and RV Park, and addressed at 1605 Canal Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The property includes Blocks 1, 2, 3, and 4, less and accepts Lot 1 and 3 of Block 2 of the Ward's resubdivision of the Plaza Vista addition to the town of Silver City. And just to let you know how the process works, in case you've not been here, first we have the town go ahead and present the hearing, their information for us, and then we will have anyone who wants to come up and testify do so. So right now, anybody who wants to come up and testify at some point this evening, if you could come up and be sworn in, being sworn in does not mean that you have to testify, but you do have to swear in if you think you might want to. So if you think you want to speak, if you would come up and we'll swear you in. If I can find it.
You ready to run in? Repeat. Aye.
Aye. Tom Peterson, Tom Turner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury.
Nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury.
All right, and then before we hear from staff, just really quick, have any members of this hearing board had any ex parte discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communications from any party to this case? Okay, good, okay. And if staff could go ahead and present.
Before I begin the slide presentation, I just wanted to remind you that the description of the property has changed, so that it accepts those two blocks on, those two lots on Block 2. So it doesn't affect the notice requirements for any of the neighbors, because in effect they were over notified in a bigger area. So the map in your packet is correct, that's the only portion that has been changed. This is ZC-13-02, and it will amend the official zoning map from Residential A to Residential C. This is the proposed zone change area, and you'll notice on the map, these two blocks are the two that are not included in the property. Residential C District, I believe this is one of the first cases that's become, come before you with this district. It allows a higher density housing, and it also allows manufactured home parks, which this has been a manufactured home park. We looked back on the maps till at least the 1960s. So this is the view of the property on Canal Street. It's behind Taco Bell, if you're familiar with that area, and this is the corner of Gold Street, some of the other homes that are on the property. And one of the reasons that this property has come to the commission for a zone change is it now has new owners, and they are trying to change the community feelings towards the park, and they're wanting to also have an RV park in the future, and this zoning will allow for that future use. Right now as Residential A, it's a non-conforming use, and so they can't really go forward with changing the park and changing the idea around the park. So this is the beginning step in new, with new owners for improving their property. For official zoning map findings, I believe you're all familiar with these, as we've had several, you'll need to make at least one of the following findings. It's in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan, and staff feels that it is, because it's correcting the zoning to reflect the neighborhood that has always been there. And if you'll notice on the map, if I go back, the Residential A is down, will be down here now, and commercial property is up here, so this will be kind of a transition neighborhood also, because there's Silver Heights Boulevard, Highway 180. So it's kind of a little transition from Residential A down here, which you'll notice hasn't been developed yet, it's still a lot of empty land. And then there's Taco Bell and the Chinese restaurant and those commercial properties up there. So staff feels that that is in compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan, is one of the other findings that you may make. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the property surrounding uses, population forecasts, rate of land consumption, or other factors. Four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. The proposed amendment responds to change conditions such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use or further studies that have been completed since adoption of the Land Use Code. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. Or number seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting objectives of this Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code. It's the staff's opinion that the proposed amendment zone change may be approved on findings 1, 2, 4, and 7. Would you like me to read those into the record for you, or?
Well, you just read them, I think that's fine.
Do you have any questions about any of the findings that staff feels are appropriate?
Well, normally, there's a little, where you, you know, contact maybe the fire department, et cetera, et cetera. Oh, here we go, I see it, there it is.
Step four.
Yeah, okay, good. And they had no comment either, okay.
And one person called the department, and she was concerned that the park would be expanding up Mountain View Road, and it will not be at this time. This has to do with the property that they already own, and that is already a mobile home park, and has been for at least 40 years.
Any questions for staff?
Do you have any other questions about the staff report?
Maybe later?
Maybe later? Would you like me to put the map back up for you?
Yeah, thank you.
There you go.
Okay. And if you would, please state your name.
My name is Tom Peterson. And, well, I'm representing the new owners, and we've done a lot of work at the park. We've done a lot of improvements already in infrastructure, landscaping, and we just want to take it a step further. So basically, we have a five-year plan to, see if I can use this, to bring RVs into this section, I believe, right there, and move some of the mobile homes out. We're remodeling many of the mobile homes now, bringing them up to state standards, minimum HUD, but much better, new windows, dual pane. See what else. Let's see, do you have any questions?
Well, you, we'll want to, as staff did, they went over the findings, and you're going to want to meet at least one of the findings, the seven findings that she read.
Right.
They probably provided those for you.
On the findings, on number one, the proposed amendment would put the pre-existing mobile home and RV park back into compliance. Actually, from, from my understanding, previously, and many, many years ago, it began as an RV park, and then they adopted the manufactured homes or the mobile homes, and, because there wasn't a lot of RVs available at the time. And this is word of mouth, basically, from the previous owners. And there has been a couple of RVs there continuously, you know, during that period, and, so we want to redevelop that and do the RV park in the front and move manufactured homes to the back, but we just want to bring it back into compliance with the zoning regulations and allow the upgrades, improvements to continue that we've done, and to expand on, being in line, I think, too, with the town's comprehensive plan to enhance the area. Okay, and that's number one. Two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan, I believe. Okay, and four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. Okay, and, sure.
Okay, you have a five-year plan, you said, at the end of that time, how many mobile homes is your goal, and how many for the RV spots is the goal?
We have approximately 40 spaces right now, and they're not all used, they're not ready to use, we have to remove some of the trailers, because they're just in really bad shape, and we want to bring in some new ones. And in that first section, I believe we have, what do you say, 15, 16? In the first section on Dish Road? Yes. Yeah, approximately that many. It originally was an RV section right there, and there's even a bathhouse that still exists. And it's not functional right now, it hasn't been used for a while, but there's one that's already there, and we'll probably tear that down and just rebuild it. Let's see, I think seven also applies. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code. Affordable housing is provided and maintained to state required standards, and concerned attention and monetary upgrades in concert with the town's comprehensive plan. Continue without obstruction as daily business function. We can just go ahead and continue doing the enhancements, improving the park, and I think we've done a lot already. If anybody's driven by there, you could probably see a lot of the changes.
Any other questions for Mr. Peterson? Okay. Did I have something a little bit later? If anyone else would like to come up to the stage? Okay, if you would come up to the podium and give your name. Oh, were you sworn in?
No.
Could we get him sworn in real quick? Thank you.
Raise your right hand, repeat that to me.
Aye.
Aye, Kevin Humble.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Thank you. You can state your name.
My name is Kevin Humble. I am one of the local residents in the area of what was Shady Grove. I've got to compliment the Turner family, the entire neighborhood has benefited from the change of ownership. I want to state that to you directly. Thank you. Question I have for the Turners is, I believe the city has an ordinance that mobile homes of a certain vintage cannot be moved within the city. I don't know if that's going to affect what's done with the older mobile homes. The question I would have is, are the older mobile homes prior to 1987, I believe, is the, is the date, 85, 87?
I can answer that.
Okay.
Any new mobile home that's moved into the town limits has to have a HUD seal, and it's generally any home built after 1976.
1976.
And even for a mobile home park, any new home that they bring in has to get a moving permit through our department.
Okay.
So they, they're all newer homes.
Newer, newer means 76 or newer?
They have to have a HUD seal, and they have to be skirted, and they have, they have to meet certain requirements.
So, so the mobile homes that will be removed from the park are going to be older than that typically?
Typically, yeah.
Typically, okay. My, my concern is, having lived in the neighborhood since 1988, I've seen it, I call it a dynamic neighborhood. There is nothing stagnant about that neighborhood. It, it goes from lively to mundane, and it can just be the change of one tenant, one, one person moving in or out of the neighborhood. And hallelujah, maybe this is a really, really good change. Couldn't get worse. Being a builder, I've, I've had many opportunities to work on older homes, and I am not licensed to work on mobile homes, nor do I ever intend to be, but I've been involved with them enough to know that there's a point of degradation that just can't be flossed over. It's, it's time to crush them and move on. I'm really hoping that the new ones that you move in will be good for 40 more years, and the ones that are time to go are crushable. I don't really know what I wanted to say, other than, than I'm all for it. I'm sorry, I'm the only neighbor that's stepping up today, but I live, my home is one block down, and the neighborhood is quieter, the people are more on the street, the kids are livelier, the elderly are not inhibited to walk out and, and sit in their front yards. It has improved. So that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
That's terrific, thank you.
Thank you very much. Kevin brought up a point, and you responded, I think you said, you can't move a mobile home into the city without a HUD sticker? Does that also apply to moving, moving one that's already here within the city? Because I, I think the gentleman mentioned something about relocating some trailers within the park. Should I hear you write on that? Oh, first gentleman to speak.
I believe.
Come up to the microphone.
Okay.
We're on TV, so that's the only way they can hear.
I'm not familiar, I, I know you can't move them in. We cannot bring anything not HUD approved in pre-76 into the park, okay? No exception. Removing them, I imagine there is an avenue through the city to be able to remove those and take them and have them crushed, or take them to the scrappies, or whatever, whoever does that professionally.
I'll go with the further answer to the question. When they go, when they decide to make the RV portion of the park viable, they'll have to bring a site plan into the town, and they're limited to the number of spaces that they can have on their property because of the size. So any further developments like that will also go through our department and site plan approvals.
Did you plan to move some of the homes that are in the park to other places?
We are moving some permanently, and they will be sent to the scrappies or crushed, or, you know, whatever avenue we have at the time, they'll be removed. And anything we're bringing in is probably going to be 90 or better, but it could be a late 80s model, you know, whatever is in good shape and we feel, you know, can be an asset to the park. Thank you.
So is the goal to get 100% of them HUD?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Yes, sir.
If I understand you correctly, sir.
Could you give your name, I'm sorry?
Tom Turner.
Thank you.
We are not going to move any mobile homes within the park. The only time one will move is when it's crushed and taken out. When it is beyond repair, and that is why we ask y'all's permission. The one that we took out in space 11, we would like to use that as an RV spot. The trailer was beyond repair, and we're just trying to upgrade the entire area. But we will not move any within the park. Wouldn't stand to move. Anything that is moved will be moved out and, and scrapped out and hauled to the landfill.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Yes, sir.
And then I have a question for anybody who would want to step up and give the answer. I, I don't know much about the current, or the previous owner's park, if it was month-to-month rents, but will these be rents, where people rent for, on an annual basis, or will they continue, will they be month-to-month? Will they be, how does that work? Or what's the plan?
Well, with the, the RV spaces, it's basically month-to-month, but the, some of the residents do sign and HUD signs an annual. And, but some people have better opportunities to move on, and my wife, who manages the park, allows them to escape the year's contract. But it will be month-to-month, it won't be a daily rental whatsoever.
Any questions for any of the other commissioners, for staff or applicant?
I do have a question for staff. This is kind of a weird question, I guess. On the zoning map, it doesn't show that section of Durango Street, but is, is that still a dedicated town right-of-way, or has that been vacated?
It still is a right-of-way. There are a couple of paper streets there on the map that you'll see.
So they, they still technically exist, though?
Yes.
I haven't ever been given back.
Yeah, that's why we broke them up that way on the map, they, they do still exist.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to thank him for taking his time to come and talk about the improvements. We think it's been improved also.
Anyone else wanting to speak? I'll start out by saying I, I've not been by there recently, so I haven't seen the changes, but I will definitely do that. I'm very excited about that. I, I think that that is an area that was in desperate need of some upgrading and changing, so I'm extremely pleased to see that's happening, and I'll definitely be taking a peek at the neighborhood here soon. And I want to thank the presenters for making logical, good, quick cases, and I want to thank that we had a resident come in, like you said, Mr. Humble, thank you. We don't have a lot of people come in, and it is good to hear from other neighbors. So if there's, are there any comments? I would be willing to entertain a motion.
Staff made a good analysis, and the people made a good presentation, it's pretty straightforward, and it sounds like it's an improvement to the city.
I'll just say from my perspective that I was actually, I served as a, as a town council member back when the Residential C Zone was established in the town, even though at the time there was nothing zoned Residential C. And I think everyone's hope back at the time that the zone was established was that this was the kind of thing that was going to happen. It was going to, you know, bring uses in line and, and give a place for, you know, things like manufactured housing parks to, to be, and provide some oversight and, and improve the town, and I think having some new ownership here, not to cast dispersions on anyone else, but it is, it is nice to see things move forward and, and have, have new energy in some areas of town. Speaking personally, I've always thought Shady Grove must have been one of the prettiest places in the town before it was developed, and so I'm sure glad to see that maybe it'll be a little nicer place to be now. So with that, I guess I'll make a motion to approve ZC-13-02, Request for MAP Amendment Zone Change from Residential A to Residential C for Shady Grove Mobile Home and RV Park, 1605 Canal Street in Silver City. That's, the property includes Blocks 1, 2, 3, and 4, less and except Lots 1 and 3 of Block 2 of the Ward's resubdivision of the Plaza Vista addition to the town of Silver City, with the following findings. Number one, that the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. Number two, that it will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And number four, that the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. And number seven, that the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of the Land Use Code.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? Now, we have a motion? Okay. If, if we have no discussion, Ms. Reading, if you would call for a vote.
Commissioner Seibel?
Aye.
Commissioner Clements?
Aye.
Commissioner Furby?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Waterman?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries, thank you. And again, thank you very, very much for coming in. Okay, we have no new business? We have no community forum? Do we have reports from staff?
Yes, I attended a conference last week, May 1st through the 3rd, in Albuquerque, and I have learned a lot. So we have no item on the agenda for June. If you'd like, we could do a session, or I could present what I've learned there, or we could cancel the meeting. I didn't know if any of you would be out of town, or?
To get the information that you got.
Okay, well, I'll prepare it for you anyway, but if you'd like to just do a work session, we have no agenda items for June.
Okay, any comments from the other commissioners on that? Okay, any comments from any other commissioners on that?
I don't see any reason why that wouldn't work. I mean, even if some of us did have to be on vacation, we wouldn't have to take action, so it wouldn't be a town forum.
Right, and I, I could prepare the information for you anyway, if you couldn't make it.
I think it would still be helpful, though, to have the meeting here so that it could be televised, because I feel like if we're going to go to all the trouble of actually having a meeting, we ought to be able to, you know, share it with whatever community members might be interested.
Okay.
I agree. The more training and information, the better. Any other reports from staff?
I wanted to clarify something, that, just to make sure that everyone knows, that this was a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission that will go to the town council, probably in July, is that correct? By, by the time it gets to?
End of June.
End of June, excuse me. So you'll be getting to go through this again. But I do thank everyone, too, from, for the perspective. It's really good to have that neighborhood input about the improvements. That's, you know, to hear that is really, warms my heart. Also wanted to let everyone know that we are still seeking applications for additional members on the planning and zoning. At the present time, we still have seven members or seats available, and we, we are still seeking applications, so, thank you.
And the only requirement is living within the city limits?
Living within the city limits, and being willing to meet once a month, and be thoughtful, reasonable citizens.
And you can either go down to, I don't know if you have them at your offices, but you can go down to City Hall for an application, or you can actually print them off off a line, I believe, right? The new one is online now? Okay. And do you have them at your offices also?
We do. We, we can get them at our office, or online, or Anne, the town clerk, has, has them as well. And they would be going through her, so the, the applications all go through the mayor, eventually.
It's a tremendous opportunity to serve. Okay, any other reports from staff? Reports from the commission? And is there any community input on anything other than what was on the agenda tonight? This is an open forum for anyone who wants to say, make a comment or questions about something else. It doesn't have to be about the issue at hand this evening. No? Okay, I'm...
I'm in charge, I'm going to the chair.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Thank you.